I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we everybody knows everybody tonight, Harley.
And online we have Monica Krabat, Deb, Rhonda, and Frank.
Addition or deletion?
So we have a couple of additions for... So in the road foreman's report, there's the certificate of highway mileage that needs to be filled out. It's fairly simple because we have no changes, but we didn't have signatures, so I thought we could just do it in that section. For unfinished business, the bylaw modernization grant came back, so Jessica sent an email about that, so the board can decide tonight how to accept that. And in new business, Deb had sent out that email about the request for the low-income housing water assistance program.
Right.
So I thought that could be discussed. And their new business, and I think that's everything. Does anybody else have anything that... I had to do a quick pull through the emails, and I think those were the three.
Perfect. Approval of minutes?
There are two... Also, there are two sets of minutes to approve tonight because last time we did not approve the special minutes from December 7th. There's just a draft, so thank you to Sean who actually caught that. He realized that those were still sitting in draft form. So approval first of the minutes, the regular minutes from December 28th, and then there will be another motion for the special minutes from December 7th.
All right, well, the minutes look good to me. I'll move that we approve the December 28th minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, just to jog your memory, the special meeting minutes was from the special meeting that we did with the Regional Planning Commission to talk about the pedestrian scoping study.
And those meetings were very... Those minutes were very short.
It was... It basically just recorded the fact that a quorum was gathered, so...
Well, in that case, I'll also move that we accept those December 7th minutes.
Thank you.
We all will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Announcements?
Nothing for me.
Reports? Jonas had sent something.
So... He had it here. He didn't send anything digitally.
He left something for us.
But he left this. So the zoning administrators' report for FY 2020 to 2021. During this past fiscal year, 32 zoning applications were approved. In summary, the type of permit applications received and approved included: single-family residential includes removal and replacement and/or construction of a new single-family resident. There were three of those. Renovations and additions to existing buildings includes decks and porches, seven. Replacement and/or construction of accessory structures, including sheds, garages, and other structures over 64 square feet, eight. Change of use: single-family to multifamily and other commercial construction. There were two of those. Miscellaneous permits: there were three. Subdivision, including minor lot line adjustments, four. Agricultural buildings and uses, five. Withdrawn, denied, or appealed zoning administrator's decisions, three. In addition to my duties as interim zoning administrator, I attend planning commission meetings and participate in reviewing zoning bylaws to consider changes and updates. The planning commission meets on the fourth Monday of the month at 7:30 p.m. If you are uncertain about whether a permit may be required, please ask your zoning administrator. I prefer to assist property owners rather than issue notices of violations. My scheduled office hours are Wednesdays from 9:30 a.m. till 1:30 p.m., and by appointment, he gives his phone number, signed from Jonas. So I think that is going into the annual report. And he's also included the warning for the upcoming DRB meeting, which is on Thursday, January 20th at 7:00 p.m., here and via Zoom.
Guess that's pretty much the story. Feeny Commission?
We didn't meet, but I'll just say that we also sent in our annual report to Deb.
Okay. Super. Thank you. Road Foreman?
Keith is not here, and there's no report that I'm aware of. However, I do have the certificate of highway mileage year ending February 10th, 2022, and this just needs to be filed with the Vermont Agency of Transportation Division of Policy Planning and Intermodal Development. And Keith emailed me letting me know that there are no changes in mileage, so I just indicated that, and it looks like there's a request for a signature of all select board members down at the bottom.
I've got a couple in the pickup.
That's pretty cool, dude, yeah.
Your pen is dead.
You got a pen, you can pass for that. I think these are all too cold.
Oh, yeah, I guess that time of year.
So under the road report, we got this... We got this card called Highway Department. Handcrafted.
That's cute.
And it's from, "Thank you for taking care of our roads to keep us safe. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Ryan Purdy." P.S. I love watching your new Holland tractor, especially side mowing and the leaf blower and snow plowing, too.
Aww.
That's very cool. To me, it's really, really nice to see this kind of stuff. The kids just sit down and write something like that. Homemade kind of stuff like that always impressed me more than anything.
Has Keith seen that yet?
I don't know if he has.
We should make sure he and the girls do see that. Put that in there. Leave that with Julie when they get their check.
First, I need to set...
Jordan?
Yeah, yeah. Bill Jordan, Bill House, yeah.
John and Deb Hurley.
He's the DOT cop. Is there anything else that anybody has to report as far as roads? Nothing, and basically on top of everything, everything seems to be going good. Everything on this side, did you... Have you had any?
I haven't heard anything, yes.
Nothing negative, so that's how good your road...
They started some brush cutting.
See, how about that's outside town. I'm not sure about over here, but...
Okay.
They got the... Road repair put on.
Okay, I thought I saw some.
Yeah, yeah, they've been working.
Okay, good.
Fung Falls and Fry Hill.
Maybe that's where I saw it, yeah.
Probably this little guy saw it.
Yeah, they went over Bestford Road, yeah. River Road.
How's the winter treating your road, John?
I think it's pretty good. I'm surprised at how well the bigger stone stays on the road and doesn't get spun out. I don't see a lot of it on the outside, as I would think, but I think they're doing fine. They're trying to maintain the fiction that they're plowing.
With a couple of those storms where it kind of went to freezing rain, it was nice to see that those bigger stones made little knobs on the road instead of just getting coated. I think we can only benefit from this product, and very happy about it.
That must be tough on a bed chain, though, I would think.
Yeah, they've got to mix a little sand with it, yeah, just to get it to go through the...
Hubert and Dorset, or Dorset and Manchester both put it on, and they really lay it on. Houses were... They coated.
Well, you think about it, literally by 60, 70 loads, dump truck loads a year, it goes on the road.
Did Bob start that document yet? If it's done, we can pass it by him.
Yeah. I guess it's not really... Not really part of the town crew business, but this is on the... On my sheet, did the annual notice regarding the herbicide spraying of the utility right away? I don't know that that really affects us, if we even own much.
That was... The only thing I can think of was, do you remember fall, maybe, when JANO or the summer, when JANO came to the board inquiring about what...
If there was herbicide spraying.
If there were herbicides being used and...
Not... Not on our... We don't apply any herbicide.
Right, it's through the state. I don't know if that... That need to be posted anywhere, or they probably...
Everybody... I think every property only gets one from...
I usually get one, yeah.
Everybody that's a customer of...
I check the mail too closely.
Of the electric company gets one in case of... In case the main transmission lines go across your property, so... That's a bigger fight than us with JANO and that, so... So nothing else for the town? Harley Crew, okay. Moving right along to assessors. Anything from them?
So there was a report. I just had forwarded it forward in it to you all before... Shortly before the meeting, but there was a report letting the board know that the equalization study results have been received. The CLA for 2021 is 91.26%, down from 105.84% in 2020. The COD for 2021 is 20.77%, which is up from 16.43% in 2020. A CLA below 85 or above 115% necessitates a reappraisal. Ours is 91.26. A COD over 20% necessitates a reappraisal, and ours is 20.77. This range in values in Politt is much wider due to the different neighborhoods, which have had larger changes from one neighborhood to another. The interest in local real estate surged with the onset of COVID, as well as other factors causing these fluctuations in the market. We will continue to monitor sales, and the above numbers may smooth out in the coming year. The town will most likely be receiving a reappraisal order due to the current COD. That being said, the state understands that it will be several years before a bid will be fulfilled to complete a reappraisal. Letters from PVR will be sent to towns in July of 2022, and the towns will be expected to respond with a plan to go out and bid and to complete a townwide reappraisal. Given the shortage of firms qualified and available to complete townwide reappraisals, most towns are looking at securing bids no earlier than an effective date of April 1st, 2025, and likely beyond that. We will be at the 10-year mark for 2026, so this is a reasonable timeframe to expect that a reappraisal will be needed. We currently have $44,000 in the reappraisal fund, according to the town treasurer. Assessors' office hours: Lisa will continue to work remotely from home, and Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays, and as necessary, to keep current with the office work. So you all have that digitally in your email, because that's a lot of numbers.
We may want to explain for the viewing public some of these initials.
I would love an explanation myself.
Do you want me to do a shot? The CLA is a common level appraisal that equalizes property value between similar properties in... Across Vermont. COD is a coefficient of dispersion, which shows the breadth of the differences between the appraised value and the sale value, and recent sales value. PVR is property and review, value and review, and I guess that's... If that's helpful.
So, John, I guess that what that means, since our COD is quite high, that means there's a big difference between the appraised value and what the home is sold for? Is that what that's saying?
Opposite. There's a big difference between what it's appraised at and what its recent sales.
Okay, okay.
In other words, if you had a property that was worth 200,000... Appraised at 200,000, it might be selling for 220,000.
Okay. Which seems normal these days.
Well, that's the new normal, and that's...
Yeah, I think it's gone up.
Some of these trigger the reappraisal, which I think in other years have costed 100,000 or better.
I can't remember, but I know that 40 is not going to do it.
Yeah, right.
What did they... 20.7 it was?
20.7, and the benchmark is over 20.
So we're really...
She thinks they might level out as the hot market goes up.
I mean, as crazy as everything went, to be that close, to me, sounds like we were pretty good. They've been doing a very good job.
Yeah, well, that's another indication of how well our assessors are doing, irregardless of other natural forces that they can't control.
Julie messaged... Julie joined, virtually, and she messaged saying CLA equals appraised versus sale is off. COD equals an issue with properties fairly assessed within the town.
Thank you.
This is Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Did that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did.
Thank you, Julie.
Town Clerk's memo.
All right. Deb is here. Deb, would you like to give your memo, or...
Yes, I can do that. The first thing I want to say, not on the memo, is that we need a select board report for the town meeting, or the town report.
We're on it. We have it, Deb. It's going to be approved tonight, and I'll email it to you.
Ready to hit send.
Okay, sounds good. So the first thing on my memo is that there is a lot going on in legislation right now with regard to town meeting. We're waiting for the governor's signature with regard to the provision to allow towns to go full remote for their town meetings, informational meetings, and maybe even select board meetings. They might be eliminating that provision where one person has to be on-site for the select board meetings. So what I would recommend for tonight is that you make a motion to go to a full remote informational meeting pending the governor's signature on the legislation. The school board met last night, and they did do the same thing. They voted to go full remote for the school board meeting, or the school informational meeting, pending the governor's signature. Another provision that is being made is to allow towns to postpone their meetings for, like, warmer weather, which I wasn't in favor of that last year, and I'm not in favor of that this year because we don't know what kind of situation we're going to be in in two months, three months, et cetera. So we worked through it last year, and we had a very successful election, so I'd like to continue in that vein. They are making some similar provisions in this emergency legislation for Election Day, which we would follow the same code of call that we did last year, giving... Sending out postcards and inviting people to... Inviting and instructing people on how to request absentee early voting. We would allow people to vote in their cars. We would allow people to vote outside. We would allow them to put their ballots in a ballot box outside, or if they chose, they could bring their ballots in, or they can come in to vote if that's what they want to do. We had a... We had a popery of methods last year that seemed to work for everybody. You do have the draft of a warning inside you. I'd like you to redo that over the next few weeks, and I'd like to have it signed at your next select board meeting. There are... I've made some bullets on my memo to you with regard to what the highlighted things mean. The three things that you guys can decide tonight, or you can let me know at the next meeting, are those three articles, four, five, and six. The Town Equipment Fund, the Capital Budget Fund, and the Wastewater Treatment Plant. I thought I remembered you guys talking about that at another meeting, but I couldn't seem to find that anywhere in any of the minutes. So those are the three things that I need you to pay attention to, and the other bullet points you can just address on the side on your own. Depending on how things go with the emergency legislation and what you decide as a board to do, as far as meetings go, last year you made a provision for one board member to sign on behalf of all the board members. I just kind of left that there, just as kind of a reminder of what you did last year, not that you have to do that this year. So we're hoping that by the end of this week, so that we can get the postcard draft, that Governor Scott will... It went through the House, and it went through the Senate. We're hoping that he puts a signature on it, because it's a little bit of a challenge to sort of hanging the balance with how the Secretary of State's office is going to recommend in the forward of the election. And we are closed on Monday in Observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and I think that's all I have. Anybody has any questions for me?
It seems like you have it all pretty well spelled out for us, and it seems like that's the right direction to go, the way everything else was going, and follow the governor's guidance makes the most sense, I feel.
Yeah, I think so, too. So I will keep you posted on that, but if you could make that motion, I've talked... I've... Kristen and I went back a little bit today, back and forth, and if we do do a full remote town meeting, she's willing to be the administrator for the Zoom meeting. Like, I think Kristen did that last year as well, and she gave me the credentials. She did set it up in Zoom and gave me the credentials, which is what you have on that warning, the credentials for the meeting on February 28th.
Anybody have any other questions for Deb? Everybody... She talked about going... Is everybody okay with going to a full remote meeting, or...
I am. I mean, we did it last year, and we got very good turnout at the meeting last year.
Yes, we did.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Harley?
Clarification, the legislation to be signed by the governor, is that allowing full remote meetings, or is it requiring full remote meetings?
And there's no... It's not a... I don't believe it's a requirement. I have not seen the wording of the legislation yet. There has been some legislation passed already, some emergency legislation, and we're waiting for the full legislation. One of the emergency legislation that has already passed is allowing floor vote towns to go to Australian ballot without having their Board of Civil Authority make a vote to do so. That was also done last year. So it's... They're kind of doing it in piecemeal. As you know, the legislation just started up, I think, last week, so they had to deal with a lot of stuff right out of the gate. So we'll see what the wording is. I, for one, would be in favor of whether it's required or suggested. I would just be in favor of doing a remote Zoom informational meeting.
Yeah, and I'll just point out that full remote will be way easier than hybrid, because if we need to do hybrid, we have to go to the school, we have to get screens, we have to set up the whole shebang, so, yeah.
And it worked... I mean, it worked very, very nicely last year. Deb's right, I ran... I admitted everybody into Zoom, and there was... I'm pretty sure there was a really... I don't want to say record-breaking turnout, but there were a lot of people there.
It was like around 80?
I think even more than that at one point. I mean, it kind of varied, but...
That was a very, very good turnout.
It was John Grascher did an amazing job of moderating it via Zoom, and everybody was very respectful, and it was easy. When somebody did want to speak, they were just able to unmute themselves and speak up, and I think it... All in all, I think it has my support for what that's worth. And again, I'm happy to... It's a lot... It is a lot easier to administer rather than doing hybrid.
Either one way or the other.
Yeah, just to try to do both in such a large space and an unfamiliar space, it just... I think it would require a lot of behind-the-scenes demonstration.
One thing I'm thinking in my head, how would it be if just the board got together? Like, the board and you got together, and we stayed here? We did the owl thing, and then everybody else was remote? That would kind of keep us all... That's a possibility. Is anybody...
I wouldn't be against it. I mean, it's kind of what we're doing here right now, right? There's hardly anyone in the office, and here we are.
It just... That seems like maybe if the board was all in one group together, it might...
I would have to check, Mike, but I think if there's a physical location listed, you have to allow people to attend physically.
All right.
So you can't... You know, we wouldn't all be able to be here, and then if, you know, Harley wanted to come and sit in person, we would be obligated to allow people to come in.
Allow them to come in.
So that's the only kind of... The only catch of having a physical location, is that if a physical location is indicated, you have to allow people to convene there.
And then if, like, 30 people came here, we'd be out of space.
Right, yeah. Exactly. It would not be good if anyone came.
We... I could look further into it, because I think, again, the rules are ever-changing, and I don't think that's a bad idea by any means, because it might be nice to have the board all together, but I... There is also something nice about having your own face and your own screen, and it's very clear. I know I've heard some feedback about people who are... Have trouble hearing from the owl, and just not frequently, but there have been some pieces of feedback. But it's a good idea nonetheless.
Well, if everybody's in favor of it, then I suppose we have... Should make the motion. Let's see. I'll do that. I'll move that we approve pending the governor's signature to have the town informational meeting scheduled for February 28th to be full remote via Zoom and calling.
Okay. Do you have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay. Pending. Governor Scott?
Thank you.
We're all set. Thank you, Deb.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions for Deb? Okay. Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Julie Mack.
All right. Hi. As all of us were being late, I was trying to get in for a hot minute, and I couldn't find the warning. But anyways, I just wanted to kind of jump back to what the assessors' report was, because I had spoken with Karen, and it was my intention to sort of talk on that, if anyone had any... if anyone had any questions, but I just want to be clear that, like, the CLA is a number that derives from sale prices versus appraised prices, as, as all of the properties in town are looked at by the state, and then the COD is a calculation that uses the CLA as, as one of the factors, and it actually shows whether or not properties are fairly taxed within the town, so whether or not properties that are on the lower end are being taxed accurately compared to the properties that are on the higher end. And the reason that the COD went up is actually because the CLA went down significantly, because houses were sold at higher than appraised values, because of what happens with market. Sorry, if I'm repeating what has already been said. As far as what is on my memo, there are two warrants this week. Payroll was $8,231.76, account payroll was $38,231.93. Federal fund money is $15,872.61, highway $14,167.47, and wastewater $16,623.61. There will need to be a transfer from wastewater savings to cover these, and they'll have upcoming expenses in the months to come, because our next election isn't until 3/10/22. There is a significant hit from the A1 bills, which is from a new pump that apparently was installed fairly recently, and then a bill that showed up from them, which they said is still outstanding, that I have never seen, which is from approximately two years ago, for another new pump. Jill has seen those bills, I think I have at least with Mike and Rich in on that, but um...
And she...
It sounds like it's legit, but it's kind of awful.
Did she ever get back to you and say for sure that her notes showed that two pumps had been replaced? Because when I talked to her last...
Go ahead.
When I talked to her last week, she still said she wanted to check a little bit more to make sure that where that, that pump from two years ago went.
And she, so she emailed me that she did find, I thought I had sent it on, but maybe I didn't, that she did find notes from, I think it was when someone named Kathy approached her, or Casey, and, and she did find notes on that, but she was, she was pretty upset that it didn't come through then, because it's hard to go back through and find notes, and you don't even have that person working for you anymore and making sense of it. She was, she was bothered by it, but she did find notes that they had done something.
Okay. Thank you.
We can certainly hold off on sending those out if you guys want another, like, I'll make sure to get the, all of that correspondence to everybody.
I think that it's, it's pretty clear that this last one was in the spruce gum, and that all came about, about the same time that the, we had the leak and stuff like that, right? That was somewhere about the same time that that event was occurring, that we were getting the excessive flows and stuff.
Right.
But that one from two years ago, it'd really be nice if we could get a little bit better clarification from them.
Yeah, why did they wait two years to fill us?
I mean, to be fair, it did come with a post-it note that said, "Not sure if you missed this, but it's still outstanding," but I've never seen it.
The auditor never picked that up, or has a carryover?
He's never seen it. I, I never saw the bill, he's never seen the bill.
Never came in.
It wasn't missed on my end, it was never sent to us.
Okay.
Would you mind calling A1 and just asking for a little bit more clarification, because it's so late, if they have, like, a work order or anything like that from when they did it, and we'll...
Can they be signed for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just the current one, I believe, is, that's all, that's all above board, and that, we knew that one.
That's the one we've been scheduling for.
Right, we knew we needed an extra one, and the rails had to be repaired and shit, et cetera, so. Yeah, if you could look into that one, that would be great, thank you.
Sure. And then I just, last point bullet here was that I've been very busy this week with the end-of-year Texas W2s and 1099 forms, exiting my office today, I hope you all found yours, please take them with you.
Thank you.
And then my last note on that is that if any employees use a problem with their paperwork, please let me know ASAP, so that I can correct that before too much time has passed. And then I just have the motions for the payroll warrant, number 22041, and the account payroll number 22042, numbers mentioned above.
Okay. Do we have anybody that has any questions about those two warrants?
So, I do. So, Julie, if we decide not to pay the second bill for A1 yet, does that change the numbers on here?
It would. I was just under the assumption that I, you wanted me to hold off on sending anything in until we collect from them, but if you want, we can just remove the A1 from the warrant, it would change the numbers, and I can provide adjusted numbers at the next meeting.
Or could we just ask you to just not send them the check until, what if, for some reason, they decided that, oh, it was a lie, and you'd already cut the check? Could you just...
Yeah, I could void the check and reissue the check for the current bill only, and then that would just go on the next warrant, and I would just make a note that it was actually, like, the warrant is for this much, but it's adjusted to this much.
Okay. So then, for, it would be just as easy to approve the warrants tonight, and you're going to look into that, and by the next time, we'll, we'll have sorted it out, and we can sit, you can send it as soon as, as we get clear, a clear explanation, and if for some reason they decide that they made a mistake, you'll just adjust it for the next meeting.
Sure, you could approve the warrants and ask me to hold off on sending a check, we've definitely done that before, and then if I need to adjust it, I will make note at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Does that explain?
Yes, it does, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the payroll warrant, number 22041, for $8,431.76.
As long as we call them out separately.
I'll make a motion to accept warrant number 22042 for $38,231.93.
Do we have a second on that motion? We can do that one motion, as long as we just call them out. Got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Great, thank you.
So, while we're on, if I may, while we're on Julie's report, I did get some information about the classification of the ARPA funds, which Julie had asked for some time ago. I spoke to, I think it was Eric Hill, from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, about those stormwater funds that Julie, you were thinking of, that we might be able to classify for ARPA. And I have the exact language, so if it fulfills the two following things, we can classify it for ARPA. It has to be a project that manages, reduces, treats, or recaptures stormwater or subsurface drainage water. And I would say that it does that, this is for the, the working West Polat. The other thing it would have to do, would it would have to have a water quality benefit. Would it do that to make it, the runoff be less, like...
Picking up less sediment.
Yeah, picking up less sediment. If it would do that, we can qualify it for ARPA. So, it, we can qualify it, it mentions that it includes traditional pipe storage and treatment systems, which is the, which is the work that was done with the pipes, and I forget the acronym for those...
DIAs.
The DIAs, yeah, the DIAs, that would go under there, and it also mentions that for stormwater, it includes wetland, riparian, shoreline creation, protection, and restoration, so that would also include the work we did, and the, the town-owned property where we dug out the bank. So, both, all of those can be classified for our ARPA funds, if we want to, and I don't see why we wouldn't.
Right, why wouldn't we?
Yeah.
So, it sounds like they all qualify.
Yep.
I would say, definitely, they went to West Polat, so it's not boiling down the side of the road all over, making a mess.
And I mean, I'm sure that the one where we, where we did the, the floodwater mitigation also has a water quality benefit also, so, so yeah, they, they should all qualify.
Right, that's super, good. Thank you for that. Okay. So, do we have anything more for Julie? I think so, right now. Alright, I guess we're good. Thank you very much, Julie, have a good night. Emergency management?
I cannot get anything from Bob.
Health officer?
Jennifer, do you have anything tonight?
I do. Well, since the last time that I reported, I got one call of an elderly mother and son living in some pretty bad conditions, but they own the property, and after talking with Bob Malino, who did a little more investigation, we found that the, that one was in Dandy, so I gave all their information to follow up there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jennifer? Wastewater, about the biggest thing with the wastewater is that, we got a message in the mail that I shared with the rest of you guys, and I think probably the next step is to come up with a meeting, whether we meet in person at the wastewater plant or not, and Jessica would like to be involved in it, which I think would be great, because of the funding side, and if anybody else wanted to be involved, we just have to warn it, and then we can see what, he, this guy, this guy is an engineer that Jill recognized from when she worked before, one of her other companies, they worked together, and he's, he's very, very knowledgeable in the wastewater treatments and stuff like that, and apparently now, he's more of a, helps you get funding, from what I gathered from the different email exchange and stuff like that, that he, he works for a company that they help to find funding to, to do projects, and so Jill would like to talk to him about a sludge storage type project, to see what kind of funding would be available, and I'm thinking that, you know, especially if we've already started the ball rolling on this, it gives us kind of a leg up on the funding that's available, and we may very well get some really good funding so that we could do that.
It sounded, didn't it, like there's a lot of funding that's going to be available in the next couple of years, and someone like him who's knowledgeable about how to get it could really help us get organized for how to do it. We could certainly, I mean, we could certainly use some of our ARPA funds toward that, but like that, like someone mentioned a little while ago, just that sludge storage is like well beyond the cost of anything that we have with our ARPA funds.
Exactly.
But it could be a nice, you know, little egg seedling toward it.
I guess if everybody's okay, I'll, I'll try and set up a meeting, either, we can either do a Zoom-type meeting or, or something, or some of us meet in person and you join us with Zoom.
Whatever's most convenient for him, I'd say.
I kind of like the idea that the, the people come down and they can see what we got, it always seems to be a little bit easier for him to get a grip, grip of what, what needs to be done, and since he is...
An engineer, yeah.
An engineer that understands the process, I think it'd be nicer if he saw what was going on too, so he could, his head could be working in, making sure we were headed in the right direction from his experience too, so that is always a good thing. So, I'll, I'll kind of get the ball rolling and see what we can do for that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Other than that, that's about it, everything else seems to be going all right. There's some new testing that we just got on, some of those, Deb sent, sent that out, and I don't, we got to do, and I don't even remember exactly what it is, but there's more tests that need to be done, and that process has already been started, and Jill's on, on with that, they're taking, the state requires more testing, and I, I can't remember what it is right now, I don't, I didn't even pay attention if Deb sent that to all of us, or just, just you and me, or...
I don't think I saw it, so it must have just been...
Maybe Rich. Remember, it was something, something to do with, had to do with the sludge or something like that. I'll, I'll dig it out and share it around, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that the, the first round is already, they came down and picked up the sample and stuff like that, so. It's just another several thousand dollars a year that we have to put in our budget for, for testing purposes, but I, I believe that we knew it was, was coming, so. And other than that, it's, that's about it. Older unfinished business?
Grants? Okay, yes, the, as I wrote in the email, I just heard yesterday that we received the bylaw modernization grant, which is one of the three grants that we applied for this fall, so now we're two out of three, and we're still waiting to hear on the third one. The bylaw modernization grant, they'll be giving us $10,125, and we, our match would be $1,125, so a 10% match, basically. That match is forgivable if, within the timeframe of the grant, which I think is the next two years, we update our bylaws and actually pass it through, which I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, because we've been pretty efficient, like this year, about getting the bylaw update through the Planning Commission and then through the Select Board. So, the primary focus of this particular grant was on, was on updating bylaws regarding housing, and there are a bunch of things that could be done that would help there be more options for people to build different kinds of and sizes of houses, especially with the small lots in West Polat. We could do some changes regarding some of the setbacks and things, to make much more options that people could do. We could also make some things be a little more, we could change it up, so if people wanted to have like more than one accessory dwelling unit on their property, that they could do that more easily, there's a lot of things we could do to make more options, and there's good state guidance on that, and Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Ed Bowe in particular, would be the one that we would contract with to do this, and he, I spoke to him about something else last month, and he says he's, he's ready to like, you know, do this work, and he doesn't think it's going to be really outside his way. So, I think this would be great. It will definitely save the Planning Commission, this is work the Planning Commission would otherwise have to try to do, and it would take us probably over a year, because, you know, we only meet once a month. So, I think this is a great, a great grant to accept, and if we get our act together and get it done, we won't actually have to have any match, which will be great. So, I think we would just need a motion to accept that bylaw modernization grant.
I will make a motion to accept that bylaw modernization grant.
Thanks, Rich, and I'll second that.
Boy, you got to be fast, the section, man.
I see your hands have to go, Tiana.
Sorry.
We're going to have to go to thirds or something.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Great.
And while we're on grants, I just want to update you on the municipal planning grant, which we, our last meeting, we did make a motion to accept that, I've filled out all the paperwork for accepting that. For that grant, it's going to be a lot like the process that we did with the pedestrian spolting study grant. We're going to be hiring, we're going to be putting out RFPs for a firm to come and to look at the West Polat Village Center, and to do like some long-term planning for it. What that means is we'll need a steering committee for this grant, and I'm going to talk to the folks on the Planning Commission and see who might be interested in being on it. If anybody else on the Select Board would like to be on this, this committee for the, this municipal planning... this committee for the this municipal planning grant, let me know. I think that because it's specifically focusing on the West Pollet Village Center, it would be really great if some folks who live in and around West Pollet would be the ones who are on this. And I also think I'd like to ask maybe a few people who aren't on the Planning Commission or the Select Board, but who live in West Pollet and might have thoughts about it to also be on this committee. So I guess I'm not really asking for anything in particular, except if any of you want to be on this committee, let me know.
And that's.
That's it for grants.
When does that committee form and stuff like that?
Um, we're, I'm forming it right now, so, yeah. I'm hoping that it can start meeting sometime in February and we can put out, and pretty quickly put out the RFPs.
I'll I'll be on it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
It'll annoy me if I if I have to drive through it every day and I didn't have and I didn't have my say in there to come out the way I wanted, like, see, I should have been on the committee.
And that'll be great. And then if you and I from the Select Board are on it, then we don't have to warn meetings.
Right, it's only the two of us.
Yep, okay, that sounds great. And I'll see if I can get like, we'll see if Frank wants to be on it or who else from the Planning Commission wants to be on it. Great.
Anything else under older unfinished? New business?
So we have two things. The first would be the approval of the report, the annual report.
I think Kristen did a really great job on that. Thank you. I had great help from John. I said it felt like I got like a Men in Black, you know, mind erase, which happens every time before I write this report. It's like, what happened this last year? Yeah, so so John and I talked through some of the highlight reel and so I really appreciated that, so.
No, that's it. I thought everything looked great. It it looked good. You guys did a super good job. And fortunately for us that you're on board with us and you carry, keep that all compiled and stuff and you deserve it.
I think it's pretty good. Hopefully, hopefully people read it. But yeah, if everybody's okay with that, I can send that along together.
Yeah, I don't think it even really need a motion or anything. It's just a consensus really. It was excellent. You guys did super. You're very talented, the way you can tell those nice stories.
Tell a nice tale.
No, just get it all out there, all the facts out there in a very.
Really sounds like we have a fun time here, doesn't it? People, I'm really trying to lure people in. What did what did Fred Stone say one time about my minutes? Somebody said, told me he's like.
Can only imagine.
Like I really make it just, it's like, I think he actually used the word tantalizing for the minutes. He's like, you tell just enough to like make this Select Board meeting seem a little tantalizing. I'm like, well, thank you.
I think Fred needs to get a life.
I'm like, well, hey, you know, those simple pleasures. Alright, so, and then the next thing is, so the low-income housing water assistance program. That was an email that came along. Did anybody see that? So.
I did. I did have a look at that.
Yeah, so it's through the Agency of Human Services, the Department for Children and Families, and it's for household water assistance. And it's a federally funded program that helps low-income Vermont households with their water and wastewater bills. To be eligible, you must pay for water and/or wastewater services, and your gross household income must be less than 60% of the state median income based on household size. And there's a resource on this website, which is the dcf.vermont.gov site, to help people determine if they meet that criteria. Priority will be given to households whose water and wastewater has been disconnected or is at risk of being disconnected. And if eligible, the program may help with past due water bills, back charges and fees associated with non-or late payment, a one-time future payment based on several factors, including household income, water, wastewater expense as percentage of total income, number of household members, and whether the household includes a child under six, adult over 60, or a person with a disability. Payments are sent directly to the provider, so it's not, the money's not sent to the family and then they pay the bill, so the payment would be submitted directly to the town in this case. And the providers will have to be certified before payments can be made. And DCF will help the providers with that process. So there's no deadline to apply. My understanding through the email with Deb. Somebody, oh, Frank, one sec, Frank. Is that the town just needs to authorize becoming involved and having attendees become involved with this, so. And Frank's hand is raised.
Frank?
I may have missed it, but did they mention something about this assistance going to tenants or landlords who have tenants who are in that class?
It not from what, it doesn't say anything explicitly about that, Frank, on the website that I'm on, but that doesn't mean that that information is not out there.
Thank you.
Did you do you read through all the fine print?
I did, I did read through it. It looks, the the application looks quite simple. It just seems like what what we would be signing would be to say we want to participate in this program. And that we would send, that we would send the people who were on the wastewater, that we would send them a bill, basically, which we already do, right? And I think there might be, there might be one digital report that we have to make to the state. It seems kind of like a win-win, because if someone was behind on their wastewater fees, which I'm sure some people are, I mean, I'm sure Julie could let us know a little more. But this would let the state directly pay us for what they were behind, and then we would get the money.
Not that they were qualified, right?
Yeah, not that they were qualified. And if this is something that people are qualified for, it probably wouldn't hurt to publicize it a little bit more that this exists. You know, I I guess we're only hearing about it because someone applied for it, right? And I'm sure there's other folks in West Pollet on the wastewater who would be eligible. If it's at 60% of median.
Yes. And to answer Frank, the, one of the something that's required is that a copy of a current wastewater bill with your name on it needs to be submitted with the application. So a tenant.
Is not going to get it.
If the wastewater bill is not in their name, could not.
Goes to the owner.
But the landlord would, I'm sure the landlord would be able to support that.
Well, that's similar, because now if you rent a hot water heater from central Vermont or from Green Mountain Power in a tenant house, the bill comes to you, not to your tenant, even though it might be the tenant's responsibility. This was new. It was never that way.
I don't know how that would impact with income and whatnot, you know, because a tenant's income is different than the landlord's, but.
Logically, it would be the landlord's income, not that's the actual answer.
Right.
It would be in the landlord's name, the landlord's personally responsible.
That's, yeah, I would think the same.
So if, I didn't, I didn't, I looked it over once and I didn't really go over the fine print again, but if you didn't see anything that jumped out at why.
It seemed pretty simple and straightforward and like we would benefit from it.
It's really, it's not like we're on the hook to pay any portion of it.
No, I mean, we're in probably, probably this is someone who's already interferes with us. Right, because it said that they particularly will pay the back, the late fees and stuff, so, yeah.
So anybody that could use the help certainly could.
Yeah, I think it would help people who are behind and it would help us.
More money coming in and and we have, we don't really have anything to do with it. We don't have to fill out any paperwork. They handle it all through the state.
Yeah, I think it's just this, it looks like, it looks like from the email, there was just this one-page form that we had to fill out.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the.
It was one of the two attachments.
Yeah, let's see. I can print that out. Frank has his hand raised again.
Okay, Frank.
Yeah, it might be worthwhile, once we build a little webpage for this, to send this out to all the wastewater, people on the wastewater as FYI, that they can apply.
Absolutely.
That would be great. Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
And to put it on the website and the newsletter and everything.
So do you want to make a motion that we?
Yeah, sure. I move that we, what's the name of this program?
So, hold on one sec. Let me bring up the form that we have to sign. The L I H W A D.
I hope we joined that.
Okay, so that's something, so we do. Julie, if it's okay with you, there, we need our federal tax ID number. So would it be okay if I left this with you after the board signs it?
Just have to wait for that to.
This is Julie Efron.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there is the, I'll print out the terms and conditions as well. We have to sign that also. This is called Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program.
Okay.
So this is the second, this is the terms and conditions, and this is the certification agreement.
Right.
How many signatures does it ask for?
I think just one.
Just one. So. Okay, so. You want to see the terms and conditions at all?
Okay.
Mostly is that we're going to stay in compliance with laws. Not discriminate against people, keep it confidential.
This is assuming there's going to be funding.
Yeah. Okay, so I know Jessica, you moved. Did somebody already second?
I don't think so.
I'll second.
Maybe one else wants to see the terms and conditions?
All in favor?
Have to sign those? There is a, you do have to sign that. We do have to initial a date.
Is that right? I looked them over.
So here's this one bad, Kristen, with a signature.
Yeah, that's the first one. It says we have to make sure that everybody knows.
So do you want me to forward the information along to Sean and ask that he put this on our website? Or do we want to wait to come up with a?
Let's wait for a little bit till we get all the, make sure it's all, everything's in order.
Could they go out with the the next sewer bill is March 10th or something?
Yeah, that might work well.
Would be a good way to get it out there.
Yeah.
What else we got?
That's all I had for new business.
That's what I'm thinking, a little bit of.
Julie said she only sends bills once per year in August. But. Just so you know.
Rich has been working on gathering all the, all the information necessary for the the sale, so we can get that property up for sale. The one thing that occurred to me, and I don't know, I sent him a quick message to Merrill to see if any of the money that it cost us to get the tenants evicted, if that can be tied into that project or not.
Legal cost?
It's legal cost is it, it was incurred, I mean, because, so the property. Well, I wanted to make sure just in case we, we want to overlook anything. And you're going to reach out to the surveyor and. Because that was the thing that came up too, is the question of who owns the ditch and if we even, if it does us any good to have an easement if we, if that property doesn't own part of the ditch or anything, so. We'll find that out when the surveyor does his job. Anything else? Old and new? For the public comment?
Rhonda is also.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah, I mentioned to Deb Hawkins today that the tree had partially collapsed on Rupert Mountain Road opposite Larry Westwood. And the utility company came up, it had cut power, so they cut it up. They pushed part of it into the ditch, but the remaining part of the tree doesn't have a hell of a lot of meat in the base. If you're just looking at it, you feel like the thing's going to fall over. And it looks to me like it's going to come down. So I got asked Deb to mention it to Keith Mason, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. There's also, you know, what they pushed off the road was mostly off the road, but you should really call that thing out there too. It's just a twenty-four inch log.
That would be great. Thank you. Alright, thank you.
Hi, this is Deb. I did make a phone call to the highway department about that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
Harley?
I had said at last meeting about a rough spot along Button Falls Road and the highway department went out even this time of year and fixed it. I didn't realize that homemade car wrecks would make a bigger impression. I just wanted to express my appreciation.
Thank you.
We have Rhonda's hand up.
Rhonda?
Same here. I'm regretting not making it hard, but we just wanted to express our appreciation for the great work that the crew did on New Street here in West Pollet. They were really considerate, made sure we could get in and out of our driveway, and the work was completed pretty quickly, so, thank you.
We haven't had anything to test it yet, really, have we? Any kind of?
No, no, the proof will be in the pudding, but the work's been done, so that's, that's one, one big piece of progress.
Good, thank you.
And we have Frank's.
A change, huh?
Frank's hand is up.
Frank?
Yeah, hi. I I left a piece of paper off today for to be in front of you guys that a 40% number. You can read it, it's all explanatory. And but one of the things is, is that I went around to do some confirmation work. And I spoke with the EMS folks at a station in downtown Saratoga Springs, the city. And and the insurance company there said 10% would be something, an increase in death rate, would be something they would see only for a catastrophe, once in 200 years. But they're seeing a 40%. But they're seeing a forty percent. Prudential's seeing higher numbers. Some other insurance companies, like insurance companies, seeing higher numbers. So, uh, everybody's wondering why is the increase starting in quarter three and into quarter four and not, you know, for the entirety of COVID before? So this is something that needs to be watched. The Saratoga folks, the EMS folks are seeing it. I don't know if people are passing away and not getting to the hospitals uh, due to heart problems or whatever, but there certainly will be some stuff coming out because forty percent is almost an impossible number statistically. And I went up to the State House and, uh, had meetings up there this past week and alerted them and some media outlets and some others, uh, of this particular development. Everybody should be keeping an eye on it. And how it affects Pollock, we don't know, but we, nobody knows why it's happening. So we shall see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Anything else?
There was just right now, perfect timing, an email that came through from Diane Matt in the library board. Um, at their meeting this evening, concerns were raised about the safety and compliance of the library, and they're requesting that Ms. Van Ort and Mr. Hewlett, the buildings liaisons for the town, are made aware of areas of concern. One being snow and ice falling off of the roof, and two, the library's steps. The library looks forward to working with you to ensure the safety of our community. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the library director, Lindsay Barnes, or myself. So it just came in, so I thought it was appropriate, but I will send it along to you too. And I'll let them know, Josh. I'll see you in Pollock.
Are you also buildings? I was at Bob.
Yeah.
I thought it's, uh, I thought... I know I'm on buildings because Sue always tells me about elevators.
I was on a sewer plant or treatment.
I think it is Bob.
Jessica and I.
Perfect.
So I will clarify that and I will pass the message along to you. Sounds good. Great. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I was just at that meeting and I had brought that matter up with Lindsay this afternoon. You're aware of it. It's an ongoing thing. And right now, we've got, uh, six parking spaces that are not usable in the winter in front of the library. And, uh, the, uh, matter of getting snow railings or snow guards on the roof is, is something that I think it's a life safety issue. You know, that Mary Lou had the front of her car crushed by falling ice. It could just as easily have fallen on her. The absence of the snow rails also makes the handicap ramp at the back, uh, dangerous uh, in the wintertime. This was originally in our plans for the library in two thousand and two, and it was taken out for budget reasons. I revisited last year with the original roofing consultant for the project. Uh, the estimates for the, uh, Alpine snow guards, it's a triple rail system, is about five thousand dollars to protect all of the, um, areas that are critical. And the library, prior to its conversion from school to library, had a, uh, a rail snow guard system up there. It will be, um, historic conditions. And I, I think it's something that really should be addressed. The, the steps are, you know, that, that got a fast patch, uh, on the broken nosing, but, uh, the steps continue to be, uh, not compliant with code and, um, and deteriorating. So I think that's something, but those are two items that, from the library's point of view, those, those address life safety. They should be considered.
So when they put the snow guards up there, what do they do to seal the roof and underneath it? Because my experience with slate roofs around here, every time that, that you have ice or snow on the roof, the water leaks up and under the slate and leaks into the house.
I've never had that. When we put them up, even with clay tile roofs.
Yeah, old houses do. Old buildings that don't have a good, if they don't put underlayment and under the slate, so what do they have to do? Take it all off, put a, put a membrane in under the slate and put it back down? Because all the old houses that I know around here growing up, you always had to get up there and get the slate off the edge of the roof because slate sheds the water. Anytime you put it down and the water, it freezes and ice builds up and travels in under the slate, leaks into the roof. But, so that's one thing that'll have to be addressed too when...
When, when the library was converted, there was extensive roofwork done and there was an ice and water shield barrier extended. The metal edge was not in the original school. What we did was we took off slate to use for other parts of the roof and installed the, um, the metal edge in, for obvious reasons that, you know, it gets rid of snow in that area very nicely and very quickly. So you've got ice and water shield under the metal and it goes up. I think they, the rolls are generally three feet. So I think if you get the snow guards in the right place, you shouldn't have any problem with that.
Would those six parking spots and the emergency exit in the back become safe with those guards? And you would have no problem parking under your car?
I'd park my car there any day.
With the snow guard?
Yeah, in fact, we, on another town hall project where it was a three-story building with clay tile roof, we put snow guards to protect the sidewalks, which were right directly under the E on a major thoroughfare. And the snow guards worked perfectly, so it's, uh, and they're made for long, so, you know, you don't have to wait for the Chinese.
All right, well, these are all things to consider as they start evaluating the project. Bob wants to know, are we addressing the highlighted points on the draft? We probably should look that over before we...
I thought it was a one-time thing that just got like forty percent or sixty percent.
No, I think that it's...
An annual?
Yeah.
I thought Jonathan...
The fire department, I, I wasn't in any, under any impression that it was...
A one-time thing?
That it was a one-time thing, that it was ever going to go back now.
I thought, yeah, I thought Jonathan was trying to recover some, uh, some special equipment that he needed to buy or needed the money to, to get right away.
That's, that's only what, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-seven fifty a piece? I'm sure that that's...
I know their insurance is outrageous and...
Yeah, everything. I think it's...
No, that, that's the only one I had to question.
They go for the same amounts from last year, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, Bob was thinking it was a one-chat deal, but I, that it was going to go up and then settle out a little bit, but I don't...
Yeah.
It was a huge jump. It's, it was a huge jump last year and then I, but I thought it was just to cover some, some equipment they were trying to get bought or safety equipment.
I don't know. If, I've been out for quite a while, but it was almost five thousand dollars to get somebody in, inside a building back twenty years ago to get one person suited to go inside, so I... That's ridiculous, so, but it's a necessary. Luckily, we don't have to pay them.
I agree.
Everything else, I think, is all, what we'd all talked about, right?
I have a question on Article thirty-three. I think there's two sentences hit there that don't need to be part of that. And middle two sentences and capital grants and donations. I think, uh, the explanation for this request should come out in however, but not be delineated in an article.
Is that how it was put though in the, because it was a petition that was signed by people? Is that how it was put in there?
I assume that's exactly the way it was. But I'm saying, is that a, we have decision on what goes into the warning. It appears to me to be overly expressive compared to normal issues of articles and that capital letters and, uh, so I don't know how we handle that.
I have to say that I've lived in other states where they have a lot of petitions on ballots all the time. Vermont doesn't do state-level petitions. And most petitions that people put on ballots are like really long like this, and it's honestly very irritating. That's a totally long one. So I'm just going to express my appreciation for most of our petitions being nice and short.
Um, we could look into that, Don. We don't, we don't, um, decide on this till next week, so, or the next meeting. I'm not sure how, how that is if we have...
I mean, there's discussions that can happen. There can be explanations sent out about any article.
Right.
But to have, have, uh, something in capital letters and two extra, uh, sentences explaining, if every article is like that, we'd have a stack.
Understood.
Between our ballots in Oklahoma, they were like...
Well, that's why we're lucky. We're not a referendum state.
I, I agree.
So is there anything else?
Oh, I just remember that, uh, I think it was last meeting that I had mentioned that at the end we might go over if there were any things people needed to do. Do you know, Kristen, in your notes, do you, is there anything that was like action items that people had to do that we lifted to one of us? Like to send an email or to contact someone?
We talked about the, the library did it or somebody, right? At the end of their meeting, they, they picked up the action items during the course of the meeting?
Yes.
You had that idea.
What a great idea.
You, you...
Um, so that, yes.
Yeah, so I, I know, the only one I have for myself is that I'm putting together the steering committee for the municipal planning grant, and that Mike's going to be on it.
And completing whatever necessary paperwork for...
For the bylaw modernization.
Accepting the bylaw modernization.
Those are, those are mine.
Um, I think that I heard tonight that Rich, you're following up on the town sale, the property for sale. And now Bob and Jessica are going to follow up with the library.
Yep.
I am going to send in the certificate of highway mileage that was just signed tonight, and I'm also going to be providing the low-income water assistance program. So I'm going to give that to Julie to be submitted. The board as a whole is going to just take another look at the draft to make sure you're ready to approve that at the next meeting. And that is, I think, all that I have. There were no follow-up, no follow-up questions for the assessor's office. Is that correct, following the...
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, thanks for going over those, Kristen.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's really good. So, and, oh, and Mike, you're going to talk with, um, Jill and the potential engineer to set up a special meeting, and if it is going to be a special meeting with a forum, we can warn that and figure out the logistics of, if there's going to be an opportunity to participate via Zoom or however else you might like to do that, so.
Cool.
Very good. Frank has his hand raised again.
Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, um, somebody commented on this before, but I don't think there was a digital notice email that was sent out for this meeting. Maybe Julie mentioned that. Uh, and also, I was looking at the town calendar and I did see a select order that knew all the meetings January going forward is scheduled, uh, today yet. And I may be wrong, but it was pretty much blank in January, et cetera, so. Um, just want to like give you a little, we, our web guy had a notice on that.
Okay. Um, so this meeting, this, you know, Frank, this was warned. An email was sent out on January third digitally from Deb. Um, so this meeting was warned digitally. The other, but that's a good point to remind him about updating the two thousand and twenty-two calendar. Thank you. And the other thing with the board, I think I'll put on the agenda for next meeting, is that we have received interest in the planning commission vacancy as well as the development review board's administrative assistant position, which apparently is a paid position that has been available. Um, so...
Probably take the notes and, et cetera.
So that is something that I think perhaps at the next meeting, maybe you'll want to do an executive, executive session to discuss these. I don't know if that's entirely, entirely necessary. I also don't know how you want to handle in terms of, do you want these interested parties to have meetings with those respective groups to see? You know, I, it's the select board's decision to hire and/or appoint. But that is something that you can let me know how you want to approach and handle, and I can help to schedule that accordingly. But those are some things that...
I think we grab them.
Yeah, yeah, so...
I wonder if the person interested in being an administrative assistant for the DRB might want to double up and do the planning position as well? Because it has the open position also for a administrative assistant.
So potentially so. This individual is, you know, lives locally and is interested in getting involved and said that they have a couple other responsibilities, but, you know, didn't necessarily felt that they were interested in the administrative assistant role more than the active member role because they didn't feel they had the experience per se. Also didn't want to take a paid position away from somebody else that might need it, but I think that, you know? So that, I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. I think that that needs to be decided upon.
Sounds good. Anything else?
Make the motion.
Bob will make the motion. Does he have a second? To adjourn?
To adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for coming.